Good evening and welcome to the April 11th Planning Commission meeting for City of Yukon. We will begin tonight with an invocation by Commissioner Geis and then flag salute by Commissioner Wright. Please rise.
Father, we thank you. We give you praise for this glorious weather you've given us. Thank you for the rain that you blessed us with. I ask that as we go into this next couple of months here that you would be with our teachers and the staff and the administration at the schools to help get them through this. And we ask that you give us wisdom tonight. We thank you and praise you for everything you've done in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the equality for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Chairman Baker?
Here.
Vice Chair Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Enmark?
Commissioner Gerba?
Here.
Commissioner Geis?
Here.
You've had time to peruse the minutes from the March 14th meeting. I'll entertain a motion at a second.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Chairman Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Commissioner Geis?
Yes.
Do we have anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? Not on the agenda. Mr. Corn, if you'll say your name and your address in Yukon, please.
I'm Leon Corn. I live at 1301 River Birch Drive in Yukon. My wife and I are the developers and builders of River Birch Estates, which is north of this proposed addition. I just got several questions. First, I'll apologize, I've had several strokes, so if I wonder if I don't crucify me.
Is this on the tonight's agenda?
I'm sorry?
Is this on the things for tonight's agenda? The item that we're doing tonight?
He wants to know, you're here to talk about the item that's on the agenda, right?
Right.
Yeah. We're not ready for that yet.
Yeah. We're doing things that are not on the agenda.
I'm sorry?
New business, that's okay.
Apologize.
I'll call on you again. Anybody has anything, new business, not on the agenda? All right, well, moving on. Item three. To hear a request by Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting LLC, on behalf of the applicant, developer Ashton Gray, for vacating an easement located at 200 North Yukon Parkway. Somebody can speak to that? Please say your name and address, please.
Good evening, Jeremy Bean with Grubbs Consulting, 1800 South Sarah Road.
All right.
This is an easement across in our site, runs diagonally from southwest to northeast. Currently, no utilities are located within the easement. We've reached out to all the utility companies and they have provided us with letters of no objection. And staff has recommended this for approval, so we would ask that the Planning Commission approve this item.
Okay, this is...
I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
We've got letters from AT&amp;T and Cox and we had all the letters we need? Okay, and there's nothing located there now?
No, sir.
Anything? Does the city have anything planned to be located there?
It appears this easement was put in there years ago to service maybe the Ole Moose Lodge. It was never used, so... And it's something we asked for them to vacate and they have to vacate it anyway to be able to sell the lodge.
So if a church is located to the east of the Life Church, it won't be needed for that either?
Huh?
It will be needed if there's something built.
No, no. All the easements that we need are being placed around the boundary of this property.
Questions from the commissioners?
Mitch, did you say that you guys had already requested that this be vacated?
It has to be vacated, there's nothing in it.
Okay.
If I remember right, it's about in the 60s or something, like early 70s, but...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have anything to say about just about the easement itself? Would somebody please read the draft motion?
Yeah, I'll take it. In the case of the easement release application by Grubbs Consulting LLC, on behalf of Ashton Gray, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings cited in the staff report. I move this item be recommended for approval.
Do you have a second?
A second.
All right, a motion and second on the easement. Roll call?
Chairman Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Commissioner Geis?
Yes.
Moving on to item four. Final plat of Ashton Place, the applicant is requesting approval of final plat for proposed duplex development at 200 North Yukon Parkway. The subject site is 4.73 acres, subject property is Zoned R2, two-family residential PUD. The zoning was approved by the city council on July 20th of 2021, and a preliminary plat was approved on November 8th, 2021, and approved by the city council on November 16th, 2021. So we have a zoning and a preliminary plat. Would you like to speak to that? And just assume that everybody's starting from zero in the audience and...
Okay, Jeremy Bean, Grubbs Consulting, 1800 South Sarah Road. Like he says, this is a plat, it's less than five acres. It conforms with the R2 PUD, also conforms with the approved preliminary plat. We have reviewed the staff recommendations within the staff report and agree with all of them. And staff has recommended this plat for approval and we would ask that the Planning Commission approve this item as well. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Any changes at all from the preliminary plat?
No, sir. Yep, we pretty well follow the preliminary plat, so...
No additional lots or anything like that. I mean, maybe a slight lot line adjustment to make sure that everything is redesigned.
Yeah, the PUD, but, right.
Commissioners, any questions?
The conditions that were recommended by the city, curious why these have come up at the end? Was this like some sort of negotiation? Just curious why these sidewalk changes have come up now?
We just made sure to clarify in this so everybody has an understanding, that's why they're brought back up. There's not really any significant changes other than what was said when we did the preliminary plat. Unless you have a specific question?
No, I'm just, you know, we've been through this three or four times and I just wonder where the sidewalks came up.
Sidewalks are always required.
Is this something that comes in at the end?
This is something usually when that structure's built, but we wanted to address it as well with the PUD, so we make sure it's all upfront on this, so if there's any questions.
Okay.
I'll ask the mundane question I asked the last two times. Is Ashton Gray, G-R-A-Y, the name of your company, the name of the developer?
I think it's EY. It's E as in the street name, Gray Street. That's how it is. E.
It is EY? Okay, so we've... It's been wrong in these, okay. I feared this either had to be wrong or that had to be wrong. Okay. So the street names are correct on the plat. We want to get that right. Any other input from the commissioners? Also, at the time of filing of the plat, all of the city fees for mowing will be due when you file the plat. I get that right, Mr. Horn? Thank you. That's not, that won't be one of the conditions, but that is, that is a requirement. At this time, anyone from the audience? Mr. Corn? We got your name and address the first time? Step back up.
You want me to repeat that or not?
No. You're on video.
First of all, you start with the traffic. There's a tremendous amount of traffic that's coming through there. And it's not only getting better. I don't know, I don't think there's any plans quickly for anybody to make a four-lane road out of that and all those, all those good things. And it's congested already with the church and also with Walmart there. Very nice to have both of them, don't get me wrong. If I understand everything correctly, we're talking about 24 units?
Twelve structures, 24 units.
Twenty-four. So the average is going to be about 48 people in that addition of those 12. I think they figure an average of about two per person. The big plan is, and I guess maybe I'm too late on this project, but have we widened and deepened the driveways where they impart more than just two cars bumper to bumper that it won't block the sidewalks? I don't know if that should be in somebody's plans. If you don't have that many, that many people. We got the sewer system to look at. I'm sure you all have addressed that or someone has addressed the sewer problem. Because the daycare was wanting to slide over when that was built and slide over and tap into River Birch, but they ended up having to take a right away on east and easement east and then back to the, to the north. So where's this sewer line going? I think there's only a 15-foot easement in there now. I don't think at that time the Wheatley's owned that property and I know they won't give up another 15-foot, but the church paid. The biggest thing is, is this development going to be inspected by the city? Or did they hire their own engineers to sign off on it like so many builders had? Or some of the big-time builders have?
Why don't you go ahead and go through all the items and then I'll have Mr. Horn address them one at a time.
The water problem, you know, they're talking about a retention area. Well, if they've been out there any time since it's rained, even a moderate one or two-inch rain, there's a lot of water that comes from our property, the property across the street. It all goes to the drainage to the east of us through that creek, and that creek can't hold it. When we have a big rain, we have water coming all the way up to the yard of the last house in that addition of ours. I just think it's something that needs to be, needs to be addressed or be taken care of, and like I said, I should have been here maybe a long time ago, but due to health reasons, we didn't get there. One of the things is, since it's going to be inspected by the city, is this thing, are these things being built under Section 8? I'm sure you all familiar with Section 8, where the government subsidizes the renters, which I know people have hard times, that was nice that it was done and we're all going to pay for it, but we got to, that's why they're tearing down so many in Oklahoma City or burning them down in Oklahoma City. However, they can rebuild them under Section 8 and qualify for that, or the... Is there going to be any restricted covenants in that? Have we seen anything restricted covenants as far as black and white? What's going to be required? Like I mentioned about the driveways being deep enough that people don't have to walk on the sidewalk and then have to walk around a suburban, out into the street? And why I'm here is, we got a nice neighborhood. River Birch is a nice neighborhood. And I got 42 houses in there and I got good people. If it's not the property, we know the church is taking care of their property good, the people of its north are taking care of their property good. I don't want to see this project start and then fall short. I haven't seen any restrictions that says that it's going to be all brick or it's going to be a little bit of brick on the front and the rest of it is just going to be siding. And I think these are things that the Planning Commission, I'm sure, have looked at and talked about and thought about. I think that...
Okay.
I'll... Want you to...
Mitchell, could you, let me, sure. These have the normal city inspections, is that correct?
Yes, these have the normal city inspections for all the utility improvements.
Just like any, just like any single-family houses.
That's correct.
And the sewer line, you can address that, I'm sure.
There is a public sewer line that they're going to be connecting to. When they did the daycare, we made them extend the sanitary sewer main, so there's a sanitary sewer main there.
Okay. Has the detention pond been made smaller since the original plat?
Actually, it's the same or pretty close. It's changed a little bit, maybe, I can't tell you for sure, but if you look at it, it's a pretty good size. It's kind of an L-shaped.
Northwest corner?
Is this, is this one that the city engineer determines the size?
This is the one that the drainage report determines the size. Mr. Grubbs can answer directly on, you know, the sizing of that.
So it's still, it's still a half acre, I think it's...
Yeah, they have to take in the historical runoff.
Okay.
When they're doing their calcs.
Okay.
And we do, if you remember right, have a PUD on that that controls materials.
Okay.
So...
About a year ago, the state, our elected representatives passed a law that almost forbids us from specifying building materials. But because this project is going through the PUD process, then we will have some, we'll have the normal controls over building materials. And so what was the PUD on, I don't, I didn't memorize the PUD, so it's...
Basically, we made sure that the materials were cementitious board or something other than vinyl. If I remember right, I think the applicant's here, or somebody can address the materials? Okay. Yeah.
I don't remember any vinyl or anything.
No, there's no vinyl.
No, no, there's no, I know there's no, I remember that part. Also, I don't think there's any single-width driveways. All of these are double-width driveways, so...
Plenty of runways, I mean, there are 80-foot minimum wide lots.
There's an 8-inch sewer main they're connecting to.
So all of the driveways are double-width, two cars side by side.
No 80, you're looking at probably 1500 per side.
So that would be exactly the same as across the street?
Red, red wide?
Yeah, it's almost identical, yeah. Do the other commissioners know where River Birch Estates is?
Yes.
I don't want to presume.
Yes.
It'll have CCRs, it's got, you know, it has common areas, so they have to have HOA, the HOA will have CCRs.
Oh, yeah. Leon, if you'll let him come up and address these?
I'm sorry?
I'm going to let the applicant come up and address a couple of your points.
Okay.
Thank you.
Only other, to add to that was the sewer line. Did you all take any...
Is there?
...toward the houses that are north of River Birch? Because you're looking at five and 10-acre tract, and that could be sold and would be applied for housing. At present time, all that sewer line that goes north ties into Valheim. Well, that's a pretty...
We'll let Mr. Horn give us a really good answer on that first.
We have Grubbs talk about this, but when they do their DEQ reports to turn in for their permitting, they will actually require to give the calcs and stuff that are needed to make sure we're not overwhelming the system, such as the waters too as well. Make sure there's enough water there for fire flow when needed. So it is taken consideration.
And that's always before construction starts?
That is before construction because they have to have your DEQ permits before they start.
Okay.
But like I said, Mr. Grubbs or his associate can explain that a little bit better.
Okay. If you could step, there is an HOA? Have you come up to the mic so the people in our vast studio audience can hear you?
Yes, sir, there will be an HOA. There's common areas, so they will have to, you know, incorporate HOA to take care of that. So we will have the covenants and restrictions in place.
So you'll have the covenants ready before people move in? They'll know the HOA fee and the HOA fees. The normal is that covers a common area upkeep, is that your, is that your general plan?
That's correct, yes, sir. Yep. And then, you know, with the sanitary sewer and water, like Mitch said, we will have to provide documentation to ODQ that shows that all that is sized properly to handle our addition on top of whatever is already coming to that sanitary sewer. So we have to prove to ODQ that we will not exceed any of the existing capacity of that line, so... And then our, our detention area has been sized accordingly to maintain historic discharge rate from that site. Because we're picking up the drainage that crosses the street there with that culvert and we will route that through the detention pond and regulate that discharge rate so it matches historic, so...
Okay. Is there any plan to do four-lane that road north of 66? I didn't want to skip the, Mr. Corn's first bullet point here.
Okay. As you remember, where they are but, they are required to pay for two lanes of concrete for where they are but. We are, at this time, through our proposed bond study, if you remember right, we're looking at all the roads in town, water, sewer and other needs. We're looking at those to see what they would like to do, if it's property tax, sales tax, whatever it may be that comes out of the committee. They'll determine those projects and those projects that we'll do. And this is one that's on the proposed project list, so we just have to see where that committee comes and what they recommend.
And just how far north it goes.
Yeah. And if you remember right, back quite a ways, we had a costus for the storm sewer over a million dollars, so, so it's a big one. So, but it is being considered. And we're also looking for other funds that will come through, you know, American Rescue Funds, you know, infrastructure funds, so we're looking at anything that we may be able to do to fund, you know, infrastructure for the city of Yukon.
Okay. Anybody have anything for Dr. Horn? Thank you. Next, Baker? Your name and address?
Yes, sir. Matthew Garrid, 650 North Yukon Parkway. I'm three lots to the north of River Birch, in the two-lane section of Yukon Parkway there. Some of my concerns with this is the drainage. You might, guys, you might take a look by, it doesn't seem like they've probably gotten a really good look at it, but there is a considerable drop there and a lot of water that moves through there. There, right, the culvert on the other side of the road feeds into that, but the northwest corner is relatively high where they're intending to have the retention pond. I'm assuming that's the northwest corner?
Yes.
Where they have the retention pond located. There's a significant height difference. Clearly, they're going to dig that out and I would imagine use those, that subsoil for these pads and these areas. The concern I have is, number one, I don't think that'll line up to actually get that water over there where you see where the water comes across south of Yukon Parking's entrance. It's going to be hard to get to that retention pond, I'm sure they can figure that out. My other question, though, is there is a curb cut on Life Church is north side, you have a large amount of paved area there, and all of the water that hits that comes into a creek that is smaller than the one that's coming from Rosewood and Preston Park and Yukon Crossing, but there's water that's coming across that way. I see no provision here for any common, any, any common area, any gutter to allow that water to come through there. Particularly, you're going to have an issue if they make those higher with fill dirt, which they're clearly going to do from this retention pond, it's only going to cause Life Church's parking area to be underwater because that water will have nowhere to flow. I'd be interested to hear what their answers are regarding the drainage on this site. I don't think it's addressed in here. I think that drainage appears that could go through this south lot three when you look at it. I'd recommend you all take a look. Clearly, don't approve it today, go and take a look more. The other issue is road widening, and I know they talked about that, but the reality is when you drive down that street, Yukon Crossing is built, their houses are right, right up on the, on the road, there's not much area there. The same is true with Preston Park. Rosewood, it's less of an issue because they, they do have a large common area there, but Preston Park and Rosewood are right up there on the east. You guys are going to have to widen it at some point, it's going to have to happen, and you're going to have to go west. And with these plots laid out as they are, I don't think you're going to have appropriate setbacks for these homes in the, number one, the north plot plat and the south plat, number one, neither one will have appropriate setbacks. They're going to have to move them out. Another question here is, is this a gated community? And if it is, it doesn't appear that there's enough room there for a vehicle to come off.
It's not gated.
Okay. An additional concern that I have is, we've approved River Birch, there's 42 units on 10 acres there. You're looking at 24, I know it's 12 structures, but 24 households, 48 cars in what's less than five acres. By my quick math, because I'm on almost 10 acres, I got two neighbors to the south of me, between me and River Birch, that have another 10 acres in total, plus the churches, which one of them is not built yet, may never be built, their sign's been up for quite a while. The other is a metal building there. There is almost 50 acres just on the front edge there that, at any point, folks may just say, you know what, we're done with it, let's sell to a developer like these guys. Let's do it. Well, 48 cars, it's a lot. I know you guys have heard folks talk about the traffic issues already, but what happens when it's not 48 vehicles on five acres? It's 500 vehicles on 50 acres because we've already, we're moving towards ruining that agricultural, larger lot community that's up there. It's going to be a real concern and you guys are going to have to widen the road at some point. It's clearly going to have to come west. River Birch thankfully does not have stuff dead on, on the side. They have some space and then they have a pool, not a home right there. They wisely... They wisely did that. I'd suggest, if you guys do approve this, they'd certainly need to look at losing at least these two lots. I don't, I don't think they can make them smaller. They look about as efficient as they can be in the use of space. Another concern here is the rental versus sale. You know, I, I get it, we need rental, but effectively, they're just opening an apartment if they're just going to rent them all and not, and they're not going to be for sale. It doesn't encourage the good community. Again, we talked about this before, but how are kids, are they providing for a crosswalk to get kids across the street to schools? Do we have any consideration of the kids getting, getting to schools? Do we have any consideration, if we don't widen the street initially, on the fact that you're going to have kids on Life Church? The sidewalk is right there with cars whizzing by them at thirty-five, sometimes more than that. If we don't widen it, that sidewalk is going to be, you're either going to have to do the widening at some point, and kids are going to be, again, walking right there with, with cars whizzing by them because we didn't have the foresight to look into these items. You know, I know they, we, they acknowledged that you had the daycare address the sewer lines. It's a big concern, too. I will tell you, my sewer line goes longer than a football field just to connect up with Von Elm. It's crazy, and we don't have provisions if anybody, myself or any of my neighbors, decide to, to develop. And it's a very real possibility in the same, in the same way that the city council got strong-armed into doing this because Yukon Crossing is just across the way. There's no way that you can say no to another development in any of these areas when they're going to be right here. Yukon Crossing is going to be right away. You've got forty-two units on, on River Birch. It's all, it's, it's going to get developed if we allow this to go.
Where's your property from Life Church?
My, my property is three, is the third one up, the, the two-story blue house.
You said you were three lots north of River Birch.
Three lots north of River Birch, and the two-story blue home there.
I don't worry. I know.
Yeah. Most folks do. And I'd say, you know, if, if, you know, they ask the daycare to do that and extend the sewer line, let's, let's not be shy here. If they want it, let's make sure that we got all the appropriate drainage. Let's make sure that we got the appropriate width here for a widening at some point that is going to need to occur. Let's make sure we get paid for those things. Let's make sure our sewer lines are addressed if they want to go ahead with this. And of course, let's make sure they pay for the mowing. Because I think last time when I presented on this, back probably around this time last year, I mentioned that the site had not been mowed. And I was surprised. It was mowed right after. I think I'm now coming to understand that that was not them concerned about the community. I think that was the city coming out and there and doing it. Because lamentably, I couldn't be here to talk at the city council. I was visiting family in California. But I have subsequently seen the city out there mowing, which I appreciate the city doing their due diligence. But to know that they have not even taken the interest to mow, to be good neighbors, to have real concern, and seeing this without the drainage, I think, properly addressed, I'm just not willing to welcome them as neighbors. So I encourage you guys to vote against it or at least table it and take a look at some of the things I'm talking about. It's a large paved area up at Life Church, and half that thing is going to be underwater. And again, as he said, that church has a lot of traffic coming out of it. That will take care of some of the traffic because they won't be able to park in puddles this deep. So.
I'm a little fuzzy about the curb cut on the north side of Life Church.
Curb cut on the north side of Life Church. They have a parking lot.
I know the curb cut that comes out onto Yukon Parkway.
But on their, their north side, they have curb along most of the north side of the parking lot. About halfway, about where, where the south one is, the south third plat, there is a large cut with some riprap rocks there to allow the water to drain off into a creek that then continues on meandering to the north until it links up with the larger creek that you see that drains out, the culvert, and down to, to the east, and again, to the larger stream. All of that water is, is coming off that paved area, and it's coming through that area. And if they build up, it will back up, and it'll be Life Church's problem at that point. So. Thank you all. Please don't approve this.
I can address the drainage concerns. We have submitted plans and drainage reports to the city addressing his concerns there. He's, speaking of the flume that comes off the church's site there at their north boundary, it's a five-foot concrete flume. We will be connecting to that flume with our own flume and taking it east down that property line and discharging it to the creek at our east property line there.
It was planned.
Everything was, we have provided drainage calculations and everything in our drainage reports that show that we've sized that, you know, accordingly to handle that. It currently, right now, that flume discharges, it just dumps into our site. It really doesn't go anywhere. It just kind of pools in the site. So we're going to pick that up and take it to the east, and it will not cause any backup of water within the parking lots or anything, you know.
Will that connecting creek have to be deepened, or what?
No, we're, we're going to, we're tying into existing ground at our east property line. And then we'll have, you know, riprap and erosion protection there in place to keep any erosion from happening at the end of that flume.
Is that somebody else's problem to deal with water that makes it to the far east?
We're just going to discharge it where Life Church does. So we're aware of it. We're picking it up, taking care of it, and discharging it over at that northeast corner where Life Church does. Not anybody else's problem. It's, it's going to, it's going to do the same thing that it does now except for we have addressed it in regards to our development. As far as, it won't, it's not going to go hit those houses. We're aware of it dumping onto us, and we're going to pick it up in storm sewer and take it to where it goes to.
So it would be in much the way that Life Church has dumped it on your property that you now have to address, whatever future developer will have to address it in that area at that point?
Well, they would have to take it up on their property and take it to the creek. That's correct.
Okay.
Do we have any of this right, the city has owned it?
It's all in our plan.
We provided plans, drainage report, detention report, paving plans, storm sewer plans. All that's been submitted with the final plat for review by the city engineer.
So if we approve this final plat, then the final paperwork is approved by the engineer, and we verify that all of these statements today are, will occur? Is that correct?
Let Mitchell come up. Is, is this part of the DEQ process also?
This is part of the DEQ process. So Robbie's done a cursory review. We usually wait till we get approval from the planning commission to do a complete review. They are not, we normally do not submit water and sewer plants to DEQ until the final plat's approved.
By city council?
The final plat by city council, that's correct.
And when's our, when's our next meeting?
When's our next meeting?
When is city council?
I don't know what agenda that'll be put on. It'd probably be a couple of weeks. I'm not for sure off the top of my head.
Least two weeks.
I will address another statement that was asked. Any time that we plat against a section line, we require them to give us a fifty-foot easement for street, or platted as a fifty-foot. The statutory is thirty-three, but we require a fifty. So all those properties that's been platted are all fifty-foot from the center line. So.
Center line of Yukon Parkway.
Section line.
The, there's a note on here, Mitchell, about label the acreage for the common area. Which, which area is that?
The common area is this L-shaped.
On the northwest, the northwest corner? Are there any other common areas besides that?
On this one, that's the only one I see. Well, there'll be some along the road that they'd be required to maintain, if that's what you're asking.
That'll be an HOA.
They're required to keep, keep care of it to the curb line or the edge of the road.
So also, just to clarify that, if this final plat is approved then, but it'll still be contingent upon the DEQ and all those being approved, like everything needing the?
Those are done after the council accepts the final plat.
Right. I mean, but approval for the building and all that stuff, it has to meet those requirements.
It has to meet the requirements. Robbie, the city engineer, will review those for complete. Like I said, he's done his preliminary review and everything looks good. But DEQ as well has very stringent requirements on sewer and water. They do not want us to overwhelm our sewer plant or lift station or so forth. So they require a lot of information. Same way with water pressure. They'll look at the water pressure, and there's minimum water pressure that we're supposed to provide for fire protection. So it's more greater than a house use or needs.
Thank you.
Next speaker? Anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Have you looked at the conditions in paragraph five? There are condition one and four sub-paragraphs and condition two. Sidewalk required on each lot, sidewalks on the common areas, garage front design, and existing easements?
Yes, sir. Yes. We agree to all those.
You agree to all, all those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And labeling the acreage of the common area? Hearing no further discussion, roll call. No, sir. Motion. We haven't read that. I just read it, I guess. I shouldn't. And the conditions, yeah.
In the case of the final plat, application by Grubbs Consulting LLC on behalf of Ashton Gray, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval with the following additional conditions. One, add the following plat notes to the face of the final plat. One A, a sidewalk shall be required on each lot and must be installed prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. B, sidewalks along common areas are the responsibility of the developer and must be installed prior to the issuance of the occupancy permits. Arterial sidewalks will be provided in accordance with the sidewalk ordinances. C, if the garage front is designed so that the garage door extends beyond the front wall of the dwelling, screening would be provided by planning either three-inch caliber deciduous tree or two one-and-a-half-inch caliber trees in the front yard prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the affected lot. D, all existing and proposed easements shall be tied to corner, to lot corners. And then number two, label the acreage for common area.
And Mitchell, I have one more question. The city was working on design specifications for duplexes about a year ago. Was that, was that stopped because of the state law passed last year?
We are work-
Were those PUDs or?
We're working on the duplexes, and part of that, we've tried to do with PUDs when we talk about duplexes from here on out. Because they typically need something from a SOIC pretty well works that has something of them.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Chairman Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
No.
Commissioner Geis?
Thank you. And this will be a recommendation to the city council who meets in two weeks or so. Any new business? Mr. Horton? Mr. Reinhardt, got any new business for us?
Not, not that I know of.
City engineer? No. Our next.